Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good, just testing.
Yes.
5:59, so I'm getting ready. Clock has struck six, or the digital clock has anyway. Welcome, everyone. The School Board of the City of Manassas is going to meet tonight for a special meeting, a budget work session. It will be conducted virtually, as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708-2A3 due to restrictions on public gatherings issued by the state and federal government. Before we get started, I ask that everyone who is on the call, who can talk, they can mute your microphones or mute your microphones, please, I'd appreciate that. We're gonna start off with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll have the moment of silence and then Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you can unmute yourselves for that if you'd like, it's up to you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Garza, may I have the roll call, please?
Here.
Here, 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 here. Here, I wish I could do that, I feel like Timmy.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, and we're getting a lot of feedback from the folks in the room. The first item on the agenda is a discussion agenda item, finance nominations, FY 2020, 2021 student fees and charges, and I believe that's Mr. Hawkins. I will mute myself and turn it over to Mr. Hawkins. Before you get started, Mr. Hawkins, I think Mr. Barrett made a suggestion about Ms. Garza logging off and logging back on. Yes.
Okay, we took care of it.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Good evening, School Board members. Today, first item on the agenda is to discuss the food fee, charges, food service fees, and charges for building use, and food waiver guidelines. This document is probably over 99% unchanged from where we had it past year. Only changes that we have are under fees not eligible for food waiver. Under reasonable charges for loss to destroy devices, if you remember this, School Board member, School Board adopted this at recently, FY 20, where reasonable charges for loss to destroy devices, computer tablets or devices, and we would have a reasonable damage repair fee. And that was included in this document. It's just a carryover from what we've already done in FY 20. There are no changes in fees or waiver guidelines anywhere else. The proposed fees for food service has not changed. You can see we have it all the way back in your packet, we have it all the way back to 2016 through FY 21. And you can see the changes that we made, but we're not asking for any changes for FY 21 and meal, lunch prices or breakfast prices either. You can go to, how about if you can go to the building, let them. Section two, and you'll see where we have $35 for facility administrator supervision. That's a change from the prior year where it was at $30 for four, and removing this $35 to accurately reflect the true cost to the school. Division is not making any, any money off of this, off of these things, be heard, reflection of the true cost to the city public school. All in all, the document hasn't changed very much. Those are the only two changes that we've made, and are there any questions, concerns, comments?
Can everybody hear me? Mr. Williams?
Yes, Mr. DiMaria, go for it.
Thank you. I looked over these previously, and I have to agree with Andy, everything is about where it needs to be, you know, there's been discussion of renting fields and stuff like that, and I, being the Educational Support Committee Chairman, I went over those, and they seem reasonable to me, so I think this is okay to go with this direction. And I caught just about everything Andy had to say, but we're still fading in and out a little bit with Andy, and I don't know if I'm fading in and out, I sound fine to me, but I don't know about everybody else, so, thank you, sir.
No problem. Anyone else? Well, there's no comments or any other discussion, let's move on to the next item, FY 21 Budget Updates.
Mr. Williams, do you want the fees on the consent or the action agenda at the next School Board meeting?
Yes, please.
Which one, consent?
Consent, yes, since we've seen it already, and there's only two changes that we've acknowledged, so that consent is fine, thank you.
Okay, as you can see from the first slide, the projected city revenue loss that we're predicting FY 21 is a million dollars. This has been proposed by the city manager and has not been adopted by a city council of yet. We received late last week a state revenue projections where School Division is going ahead, all of these are, I don't want to misstate, I said lose, these are deferrals. Both the city and the state have promised to come back at a later point in time, review the revenue projections, and if the money is there, to give the funds to the school division. Right now, the projected state revenue deferral is about almost $1.7 million. So the total projected revenue deferral right now is $2.667 million. These revenue deferrals do not include any potential revenue losses in sales tax or lottery proceeds or ADM. What I mean by ADM is as to average daily membership. So we don't know how many children we may have coming back except in August. We're also, if we're in a virtual mode, like we are now, it's the state is supposed to give us a ruling soon about whether or not they are going to, is that going to be counted as ADM, or are they going to be counted as involved in our school division? You know, we're in an uncharted waters at this time, so I think that the answer to those questions are yes, that the state is going to allow us to, if you're enrolled in our school system, you're receiving instruction from us through whatever means it is, whether virtual or in person or hybrid approach, however we are at that time, then you'll be counted as far as our ADM is concerned. The much more troublesome ones are what losses we may have in revenue due to sales tax or lottery proceeds. Lottery proceeds were down approximately 28% between the month of April, March and April. So, but, you know, with, when the restrictions or when the economy gets back going, they are, some are predicting that the economy is going to pick back up, therefore the sales tax and the lottery proceeds will come back, we'll see. So the city of Manassas is scheduled to adopt their budget on May the 11th, and the government has promised to reconvene a special session of the General Assembly this fall to reassess the revenue projection. Once the city council has adopted the FY 20 budget, we'll schedule another board, School Board work session to discuss the superintendent's recommendations on adjustments to the FY 21 adopted budget. I know there's been some conversation in, concerned on School Board members and others about the CARES Act allocation, and these next few slides will describe to you about that act. Manassas City is going, public schools is going to get a little over a million dollars in CARES Act allocation next slide. So you can see what this money can be used for. These are very broad, very lenient types of things. For example, you see the third rule of day, providing principals and other school leaders with resources necessary to address school needs, you know, training, professional development, you know, we can, you know, other activities that are necessary to maintain the operations and the continuity of services and continue to employ existing staff, you know, so it's a very broad, we can spend the money pretty much as we see fit, as we need it, to help some of the purposes that we can use it for is reimbursement for some of the costs that we have incurred due to the, due to the pandemic, but the next slide, please, that, I will, you'll see some, but the Virginia Department of Education has made a recommendation of what they would like to see us on. And we certainly support those ideas, like supporting remote learning through educational technology, including hardware, software connectivity, assistive technology, and adaptive equipment. That's going to be a very important part of where we, where we are going forward. But, you know, we're also, we're going to be looking at, the first thing on our agenda is to support quality instruction in our, in our, for our children, whether it's in our schools or in their homes, that's our first priority. Our second priority will be to recoup some of the expenses that we've incurred due to the pandemic, well, but I'm more concerned about how we're going to provide instruction going forward to our students, however that may be. I'm not, we, I don't think any of us know yet whether we will actually come back into the school. If we do, will it be at a reduced level? Will we, how, how will our environment, how will our instruction be delivered to our students? One of our primary goals, I think, would be to make sure that all of our children have devices, all of our children have access to the internet, and so that we have a way for our children to be, to receive instruction from their, from their teacher. I just wanted to share with you, we, we're going to have to create a budget, we'll have to have that budget approved by the DOE, and then we will have to submit those costs when we know that. The executive team, Dr. Newman, are working now to try to plan on what our school division is going to look like in August, when the students are scheduled to come back to school. So, that's a, that's a lot of information out there about the CARES Act, but generally speaking, I want you to know that we can sort of spend it on whatever our true needs are for this school division. Some have insinuated that a million dollars is a lot of money for Manassas City Public Schools. It's not. I mean, if we were to just provide internet access to our population of students that don't have access to, to the internet, it'd probably cost us a half a million dollars. So, and I don't want anybody to think that, well, if we're going to lose a million dollars from the city, well, we got a million dollars in CARES Act funds. This CARES Act money is one-time money that can, that cannot be used to provide ongoing services. For example, we wouldn't use CARES Act money to provide teacher salaries, or, you know, instructional aids or anything like any ongoing expense. The CARES Act is to help us get up and get going so that we can make sure that we are being able to deliver quality instructions for our students, it's not for reoccurring expenses such as teacher salaries, principal salaries, or anything like that. Okay, are there any questions, concerns, comments about the, about the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, I'm looking around, any comments, questions, because I see Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hawkins, I like where you went, right? I mean, just because the city has deferred a million dollars, and we have a million dollars coincidentally in CARES money, does not equate to the same thing, especially after Mr. Barrett last meeting talked about, we've had, we've given a lot of devices, issued a lot of devices out to many of our students, because they need that to continue the learning environment from home, and we're probably going to have a larger-than-normal breakage rate. And I do know, buying commercial IT right now is really hard, because every school system in the country is just bought everything there is, just like every hospital has bought every, you know, and not, every mask, every school system is trying to buy every laptop. To the budget, my concern, though, is we've got $2.6 million worth of deferral. I have no reason to believe next year's budget will ever see it, contracts, commitments, things are due, you know, should have already been out. We've got a budget that, by the way I look at it, has $2.6 million too much spending in it, and we've got to think about what to do about that.
We, when, after the city council adopts their budget, we'll be scheduling another budget work session, maybe later next week, and we'll be discussing the superintendent's recommendation to this board on how to mitigate this, this two point, almost $2.7 million worth of revenue deferral.
Thank you. Good point, Mr. Albrecht. Any other comments or questions? CNA, Dr. Newman, did you want to say something before we moved on to Board Member comments?
Yes, I was just going to add, just piggyback on what Mr. Hawkins said, we have been working on different options to get to that 2.6. You know, we're going to continue working on that and be ready to present to the board, hopefully sometime next week, after we get the official approval of what the city will be doing for our budget.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Well, with that presentation, I believe that we're done with our discussion agenda, and the last item is Board Member comments. I don't think our student representatives are on this work session, meeting, since this is a work session, but I do want to leave time for our board members to make comments, and I'll start with Ms. Stevens.
Hi, well, I wanted to give a couple shout-outs. We know that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and yesterday was School Nurses Day, so I want everybody to take a minute to honor all our teachers and our school nurses and the important jobs they play in educating our students. Also want to recognize Baldwin Elementary as a project lead-the-way distinguished school for 2019, 2020. Hayden Elementary was recognized for the 2019, 2020 as a common sense school, and Osborne High School, the Osborne High School's SCA for the sixth consecutive year was the 2020 National Council of Excellence, and for the seventh consecutive year, they received the Student Council's Achievement Award, and those are some pretty big accolades, and it tells you how hard our students, our teachers, our administrators work every single day, and so they deserve the honors they get. So I want to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Next, Mrs. Williams.
So I wasn't quite sure how to honor our teachers, we weren't able to provide breakfast for the, from the PSTA this year, so I decided to read a poem. It is not written by me, but I just loved it. It's called "Our Children Are/All Need Great Teachers Just Like You." "You once had a choice, and you chose to teach, and every day it's our children you reach. You make the difference in the life of each child, those that are quiet and those that are wild. It's the way that you teach, you do it so well, they look up to you and think you are swell. You teach from your heart, that's plain to see, they think you're divine, and we all agree. Please never forget and remember it's true, our children all need great teachers like you. We appreciate you, and we value your time, and if you should forget, please take the time and read this rhyme." I'd like to also add, before I got into my office to, to participate in this particular meeting, there were fire engines, police officers, Manassas City, Prince William County, and another police car I didn't even recognize, fire truck, the fire truck had its ladder way up with this huge American flag flying in honors of Heroes Month this month, and you know what was missing? I felt like the school buses were missing. How awesome would that have looked? Because I feel like teachers are heroes as well, and that's it, thank you.
Very nice, thank you, Mrs. Williams. Ms. Seabird?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comments this evening, other than repeating the accolades to our students and our school programs that are continuing, and to all our teachers and our nurses, thank you so much for caring for our kids, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seabird. Mr. DiMaria?
Great. Suzanne, you're still ringing. Okay. Thank you to all of our teachers and our nurses, and all of the nurses out there risking their lives in this terrible time. I have been paying attention to city council and their budget meetings, and we have trouble with our budget sometimes, figuring out what we can do, what we can't do, and so do they. They are working desperately hard to come up with a tax rate that's fair, they're trying to do everything in their power, and I appreciate their efforts, I really do. But I do have to take some issues with some of the things that have been said at the last two meetings. Mr. Lovejoy pointed out that the city council raised the tax rate to pay for Baldwin. Now, my phone is ringing, Suzanne, and the tax rate may have gone up somewhat, but when we built Baldwin in fiscal year 16, I believe, our increase from the city was 2.7%. The year before that was 1.5%. And, you know, that's, the one year was $730,000, the next year was 1.4 million. That's quite an increase, sounds like it, but when your increase actually equates to less money per child, 16, we got $6,100, 17, we got $6,000 per student. So the fact that the School Board, I mean, that the city council is saying that, another board member said, when we funded Baldwin, meaning the council funded Baldwin, Baldwin was funded out of our allocation, basically the same allocation we've been getting before, it was funded through a zero-based budget so that we could come up with funds to pay for Baldwin. That's how it was done, it was fiscally responsible, and there was, I don't see any large increase in any of these years that paid for Baldwin. Baldwin came out of us saving money, saving our budget and money in order to pay for our debt service, which we have paid our debt service. It was pointed out that the city pays the debt service, and they do, out of funds that have been allocated to the school board. They're also talking about maybe raising the tax rate in order to pay for Dean. It's never been done that way before. In my 14 years on the board and my 40-some years involved with this school system, it's been done through the school board's budget. If city council wants to raise the tax rate and put that money away for Dean, I'm all for it. I'm sure not going to, you know, cut my nose off to spite my face. But they've been using words like, it needs to be put in a lockbox, it needs to be seized so that the school board can't use it for other things. What they're referring to is, a couple of years ago, when our debt service was reduced, we went through our zero-based budget and were able to give raises to our teachers. Part of it was through the fact that we didn't have as big a debt service, and those are funds. Mr. Lovejoy said that the school board puts, put operations ahead of capital. I vote, and it's either or, operations or capital, every time it will be operations, because operations equates to people, to teachers, to bus drivers, to everybody that makes our schools go. So I will never vote, if it's either or, I will never vote for capital over operations. I want both, and if the city council can come up with a funding, a way to fund that, and we never see that money, that's okay with me, just so we have enough money for operations. I would love any help they can give us, and I will gladly take it. Dr. Newman, I assume you're listening? In the last council budget meeting I was watching on Monday, the mayor said, well, let me, let me quote this, the mayor said, a couple of years ago, when Mr. Elston was still on council, he and I were working closely with the superintendent, city manager, the chairman, and one other member of the school board to have those discussions, and then those discussions went away at the request, basically, of the schools. They made the choice that they didn't want to move forward with preparing for the future in regards to building a new Dean's School. It was my understanding, as I wasn't in that meeting. It was my understanding, as I wasn't in that meeting, that we did want more discussion about funding Dean. Can you explain what went on in that meeting and what the mayor meant by what he said there?
Mr. Di Maria, I'm not sure what the mayor was referring to. I do know the meeting that he is talking about, and that was a meeting that the member, the school board member that he is forgetting the name of is Vice Chairman, a woman, Kiefer, who was there, Andy was there, and myself. They had Mr. Elston, the mayor, city manager, Pate, and Ms. Bergeron. At the end of that meeting, we discussed possible future meetings. At no point during that meeting, and Chairman Williams was there, as so as Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, at no point did we say we did not want to have a meeting. We talked about the need of having productive meetings, because we had just finished having 12 meetings, joint budget meetings, that did not come to a resolution on how to fund Dean. I am also very confused about that statement, because during the legislative breakfast, when I entered that event, I ran into the mayor, and Mr. Hawkins was with me, and at that point, we were told that the city council was not at a point to, that they wanted to continue those meetings. Later in that event, he shared that same statement with myself and Chairman Williams. So how do we go from the council not wanting a meeting to now the school board not wanting a meeting? I'm confused, I'm just as confused as you are.
Thank you, sir. I guess we'll just have to figure that out. Going back to council, again, they are in a tough spot as well, and I don't want to jump on them, because we need them, the city needs them, our students need them, and they are working hard. I honestly believe they're working hard. I just want to make sure that all of the facts are correct, and that people do their research, know the facts, and state the facts, and just be honest about it. So hopefully this can all work out, and hopefully the city council can figure out a way to help fund Dean, because if we don't start now, we're going to have a hard time doing it, and in our budget right now, I don't see a whole lot of money going toward Dean, because, again, with only a, you know, 1.8 or a 2% increase this year, whatever it's going to be, minus a million dollars, that doesn't leave us a whole lot of leeway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Di Maria, and Dr. Newman, for your feedback. We appreciate that. Next, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would echo, I think, what Mr. Di Maria said. If there's some, I guess what is often called revisionist history going on, we both, council and the schools, need to get on the same page. We're going through some very difficult times, and now is not the time to throw rocks at each other. So let's remember for what it was, Mr. Di Maria is right, we had 12, 13, 14 meetings together, and we could not get to an agreement on what the future funding was. To say that taxes were raised to pay for a school is a pretty kind of a stretch, if you will. So, but I don't want to get into a rock-throwing contest about that. Rather, I think we all need to look and say, what's in the best interest of the city, whether it's the new public safety building, the new firehouse, many of the new capital needs we need, and other things, because I recognize across the country, one of the things being discussed right now is the significant pressure on local government, as local revenue will decrease, and here are the people we have been asking for the past 60 days, and will continue to ask, to protect us, our healthcare workers, our firefighters, our police, our ambulance staffs, et cetera, they could be the result of budget cuts across the country. So I understand the pickle that the, the city council's in. And I do think as we go forward, things are going to look radically different. I think the 2021 school year won't look like normal either, and I don't, I'm not trying to say anything, I think as we go forward, our nation, our world is changing, and, you know, I like to quote Einstein often, you know, doing the same thing and expecting a different result is insanity. Well, we won't be doing the same thing anymore. We have to approach some things differently, and not just from social distancing. So that is really a challenge we collectively on this call have as we look over the next 60, 90 days. So it's one I know the superintendent's already looking at. I was on a conference call yesterday with, you know, Dr. Lane's mother, other people also, and I was listening in. It's, I know, being addressed at the state level, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albrecht. Mrs. Kiefer.
Yes, thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay. So, no, I echo a lot of what's been said. I think there's been a lot of good things said this evening. One of the things that I will continue to say is support your local businesses. I know, you know, it's, it's tough, not everybody can do it as easily as others, but it's really important to our local economy to support the local businesses. I would say too, I just want to ensure that when we're talking about these potential funds for the CARES Act, that there's not a misnomer that all of a sudden we have extra money to just run operations. As a person who's in charge of a reentry plan from my own office, I can tell you it's not going to be cheap, it's not going to be easy, and it's, it's above and beyond what normal operational costs are going to be. So I just want to make clear to the public that whatever plan Dr. Newman and his team go forward on, this is just a new normal. This is something that none of us really know how to plan for, but we can't just pretend that that's a replacement for what we really need to run the schools if we were back to the old normal. As far as the city and the, and the schools go, that meeting was not one where we said we were done talking. The conversations are just now going to begin, and they need to begin quickly, and they need to be within the different context within which the society is now operating. So whenever we're ready to get back together, Chairman, let's go. But I, I feel for the city council and what they're going through. It's not easy to plan for all of the services that both Mr. Albrecht and Mr. Di Maria have touched upon. There are choices that have to get made, and now it's just impacted by the complexity of where we're at as a society. So we're willing to continue these conversations. We know what we need to run the schools. We now know that it's going to be even more difficult, because we don't even know what to expect come the fall. So we'll just continue to move forward together as a team and as a city. And I will just end with saying, the special thing about Manassas City are calls that we got from Coach Schultz. He called to check in on my daughter who's in his class, making sure she's keeping physically active, making sure her mental and emotional well-being is, is going well. Of course, teenagers don't answer their phones, but he called me, the parent, to make sure my daughter was okay. So we can talk about all this other stuff, but at the end of the day, we need to think about the heart of this district, and we need to understand why we're so darn special. And so I take pride in that. The Facebook messages you see teachers giving to their kids, and, and the parents of the kids giving them right back to those teachers, man, that means so much. I know Mrs. Stevens can probably relate. They miss each other. They love each other. This is tough for everybody. And you know what? No matter how we're going to re-enter, they're all going to stick together. So I just say, guys, we got to keep plugging forward, we got to keep moving. The world's a different place, but we're going to make it, and the city's got to come around it. And so we'll partner in whatever way we need to to make that happen, and I just, I'm just grateful for everybody who's working so very hard. I don't think people can understand how hard people are working behind the scenes right now. So with that said, I'm, I'm going to stop, but just express my gratitude to everybody.
Very well said, Ms. Kiefer. Thank you very much. Before I get started, I want to thank, I know Mr. Barrett's on the phone, Dr. Saunders, and then in the room I see Ms. Miller, Mr. Hawkins, and I think Mrs. Garza, and then Dr. Newman as well at the office. So thank you all for your work. Those are the kind of folks working behind the scenes that folks don't necessarily know are working behind the scenes, but we appreciate your work, and everyone else who we can't see, we know a lot of people are working. I worked all day today, and right before I got ready for this meeting, I decided to write something up, so bear with me. Good evening, hope everybody listening is well and staying healthy and safe. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to thank our incredible teachers for their work and dedication. They do a great job in normal circumstances, and are doing an exceptionally good job while dealing with the formidable learning challenges presented by this pandemic. I appreciate their work and what they do for our schools, our students, and our community. It is also National Nurses Week, and I want to thank our nurses for their dedication and compassion. Nurses are an important part of our schools and are on the front line of fighting COVID-19. Thanks to them for all they do. There has been some discussions this evening about city council and Ginny Dean and Linnery. I have brief comments. The first is that my recollection comports with Dr. Newman and Ms. Kiefer about the conversations, and I'll leave it at that there. The second is that we need a new Ginny Dean sooner than later. The third is that the school board has been and is willing to speak with the council in productive, as Mr. Albrecht alluded to, productive conversations about Ginny Dean. And fourth, the board has been and will continuously and simultaneously be focused on doing what's best for our kids, our students, and be fiscally responsible to the citizens of Manassas. I don't want to pat on the back, none of us want to pat on the back on how we handle our money, but we work hard to try to make sure that we take every penny that we get from the citizens of Manassas, whether it be through state funding, federal funding, or city funding, and spend it responsibly and wisely. We've done that since I've been to the board for 10 years, before I got in the board, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that. So we are fiscally responsible, and everyone who looks at our budgets, they can tell that, and we'll continue to do that going forward. Now, on a more global basis to the pandemic. The pandemic is a harrowing challenge. My wife's a pediatrician, and she's dealing with more mental health issues than she usually deals with, and my son in New York, who's also a pediatrician, is going through the same thing, so I know that this is widespread. A lot of people are unnerved, they're anxious, and they're scared. And on top of that, there are other things going on in society, including something that I talked to some of my family members and friends about, about a young man, Ahmad Avery, who was murdered in Georgia. So all this stuff is coming together to make this a really challenging and scary time. I distinctly personally know people who've lost their lives already to COVID-19, and I know people who've lost their family members to COVID-19. I know folks who've lost their jobs, and folks who can't pay their rent. And it appears, to be quite blunt, there's going to be more sickness and death before we're done with this. So it is especially important right now, in times like these, that we encourage each other, we look out for each other. We look out for our students, of course, because our students are our primary concern, but also for those who may not need it, you might, you may not think of those who may need a boost. So there are folks we think of as strong, who never need help, and who, you know, always do things for themselves, and some of them are our police officers, our doctors, our nurses. They especially need our support now. Anyone you know who may need, our teachers too, anyone who you know may need support, please look out for them, because sometimes folks who are perceived to be the strong ones are the ones who need the most support. We also need to take care of ourselves and maintain a positive mindset. We, as a city and as a nation, have the skills, the ability, and the resources to meet this challenge. We can and will get through this, but we must do it together. And I will end with two quotes, one kind of long and one pretty short. The first I found was by Abraham Lincoln in the second novel Address, and it summarizes how I hope that I'm modeling behavior to folks. And the quote is, "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for him who shall have borne the battle, and for his widow and his orphan, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and with all nations." And finally, I think our Star Wars fan will appreciate this, I guess Monday was May the 4th, a lot of Star Wars stuff going on. I'm not a big Star Wars fan, but I, I did note that. Yoda has a lot of quotes, and one which I love, it says, "Do or do not." There is no try. So how does that affect us? In my mind, as a city, as a state, and a nation, we have no choice but to do. Do what's best for our kids, what's best for our teachers, what's best for our city. We must do, be not, as, not an option. So hopefully, we all will work together, stand together, and be together as we move forward and deal with this pandemic, because it's not going to go away anytime soon, and we need each other to get through this. So I apologize for the length of this, but I just had a flurry of consciousness, and I just put stuff together, so that's what I was thinking, that's my heart. So thank you for listening, and with that, we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is the adjournment. So may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, move this for the adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Di Maria, that we adjourn. Because we have a visual meeting, we must have roll call, so Mrs. Garza, may please do a roll call for the motion for adjournment.
Chairman Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kiefer?
Aye.
Ms. Di Maria?
Ms. Di Maria, aye, and I miss you guys.
Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
This is Seabird?
Aye.
This is Williams?
Aye.
This is Stevens?
Aye.
As have it, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time and your patience, and I look forward to seeing you all soon, hopefully in person one day, but until then, please stay safe and stay healthy. I appreciate you all. Thank you.